I'll let the caller, Fairfield County Council Regent meeting to order. Winsboro, South Carolina. Winsboro, South Carolina, Monday, July 12th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Can we get approval of agenda?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the agenda be approved as outlined. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay? Let the record show, 6-0 for the approval of the agenda. We have invocation by Councilman McGibbitt.
Let us power heads. Father God, we come before you in the precious name of the living Son Jesus Christ, giving you thanks for life, health, and strength, your grace, your mercy, and your salvation. We ask right now, Lord God, that you touch our hearts as we go about your county business, Lord. We ask that you just intervene and just help us, Lord God, to make the right decision, to put aside selfish reasons for what we want, for what you want us to have for the county. We pray this in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman McGibbitt. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved in second that the minutes be approved. Are there any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay? Let the records show that 6-0 approval of the minutes. Public presentations, none. Six, first public comment section, Mr. Caller.
We have one person signed up for public comment, Mr. Randy Bright, and he is speaking on the hospital.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield County. Actually, the hospital-related items are enumerated twice in tonight's agenda. And I would be remiss if we didn't take this opportunity to first recognize what went efforts that went into for us just to have a hospital to begin with. First of all, we want to recognize ex-employees, employees, Taylor and Tommy, who negotiated the contract with the state and Providence to ensure that we would have a hospital. They even went so far as to working with our delegation at that time to ensure that the deadline for state funding for our merger was extended to ensure that we have a deal in place to ensure that we have a hospital, state-of-the-art hospital that we have today in Providence. And of course, it reminds us that good employees leave bad bosses. But also, we want to recognize, I believe Neil was heavily involved, and I know Clarence, for a fact, was heavily involved in bringing the hospital to our county. And not only did it ensure that we have a state-of-the-art hospital, but it also ensured that it gave us great dollar savings. The old hospital was costing us the last few years a million three from the county. The new deal only costs us a million dollars a year. But on top of that, we get an extra, I don't know, four, $500,000 in property taxes that we weren't getting with the nonprofit hospital. So seven, $800,000 a year in savings and getting a state-of-the-art hospital. Thank you, Neil, Clarence, Billy, and of course, Tommy and Jason, for ensuring that we are even able to discuss hospital deals today. Because otherwise, if it was not for them, we would not have a hospital today. I can guarantee you that. Thank you, and you can have the 35 seconds.
Thank you. Public hearings, none. Ordinance and resolution and orders. A, second reading of orders number 772, ordinance to establish and recognize June Thief as a public holiday and special day of Fairfield County. Can we get a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there discussions? Yes, sir. Mister Robinson.
Mister Caller, are you aware that, well, let me rephrase that. Are you aware if we have a cap on holidays or do we have a cap on as many holidays as we can?
Not that I'm aware of.
I remember some discussion about that some years ago, that's why I asked.
Okay. I'm not aware of one.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay? Let the record show 6-0. Resolution number 2021-08. A resolution appointing Fairfield County representative on the commission for the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System. Can we get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 2021-08. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay? Let the record show 6-0. Resolution number 2021-09. A resolution to approve the settlement between Fairfield County and Dominion Energy, South Carolina Incorporated, FKA South Carolina Electric and Gas Company designation, and authorizing the county, the council chair, and if necessary, the interim county administrator to execute the agreement and related documents.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 2021-09. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Oppose's nay? Let the record show 6-0. Down to boarding and commission minutes, none. Boarding commission appointments, none. Old business, none. New business, none. County administrator report, Mr. Caller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Our first item up tonight is we have Mr. Bill Coleman with us, who is our engineer with the CTC, the County Transportation Committee, and he's here to give us an update on their progress.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Bill Coleman. I'm with infrastructure consultant and engineering. We call ourselves ICE. We are the CTC engineer for Fairfield County. We also are general engineer for Fairfield County on a separate contract. I am the contact person for both contracts. My purpose here tonight is to sort of inform you a little bit about how the CTC operates, a little bit of history. I've had several phone calls, and hopefully this will give you enough information that you can know a little bit about what's going on. Please feel free to call me at any time. I always answer my phone, I always return phone calls, and if I don't know the answer, I'll find it out quickly. CTC, County Transportation Committee. The members are appointed by the legislative delegation. Present time, we have four. We've had as many as 12. There is no set number. These are citizens from the community, non-paid. They don't even draw mileage. They just come to the meetings, which we have three or four a year. It's a little unusual in a committee because the delegation also appoints a chairman. The committee does not elect a chairman. The delegation appoints a chairman. The CTC is a spin-off. I'm sure everybody's heard about the old C program, the old farm-to-market roads that they took so much of the state income and they buried it out on farm-to-market roads. And in the 90s, they changed the system. And they gave, they made it to CTCs, and they gave each county the right and authority to spend their money. The sole purpose of the CTC is to spend the money that comes from DOT. And that money comes from the gas tax. In the year that just started, 3.99 cents of the 26 cents of gas tax goes to the CTC. The CTC runs from July the 1st to June the 30th. The year that just started, Fairfield County will get a million 573,200. That is the projection. That's the most we've ever gotten. Now, everything comes with a catch. The committee gets that amount of money, but they have to spend a third of that on DOT roads. The rest of it can be spent on county roads. Now, they're not limited to a third, but they have to spend a minimum of a third. Just to give you a little history, which I think is interesting. Allen Dale gets the least of any county. They get about 850,000. Rishland gets the most. They get about 5.3 million. And the apportionment is based on three things. Number one, it's a third of the area. Each county, a third of the area, a third of the population, and a third of the rural roads. The rural roads are updated yearly. Population's updated with the census. Of course, the area doesn't change. Just in case you're interested, Fairfield County is 2.28% of the area of the state. We have 1.52% of the roads in the state, and our population is 0.52. Now, we may lose a little bit when they get the census going, because I don't think Fairfield's growing as fast as some of the others. And when you throw those three items in there, we won't lose much, but we'll probably lose a little bit. We got a total of 1.44% of the big pie, which this year is about $110 million. This year, we're doing a joint venture with DOT. DOT has an in-house base crew, and they're going to do the base work, and the CTC is going to do the paving. And the roads that we're going to do is Rock Bridge Road, where it's been torn up going to the new Molly Park out at Watergate. And going to do about two and a half miles of S-99, starting at Sheldon Road going toward 215. The DOT roads, the committee basically lets Jamie Johnson, who is the resident maintenance chief for the county, I mean, he knows what he needs, and he comes and makes his presentation, and they accommodate him every possible way. I'm involved in four different counties. This is the only county of the four that has a citizens committee. And believe me, the citizens committee works better than it does anything else. Sometimes, in Chester, for example, the CTC is the council, and you get the politics involved. You don't have to tell anybody if I said that. All of our roads are built to SC DOT specs. Now, when I say that, I'm talking about the work and the materials. SC DOT would not allow you to build a road without totally designing it, being 20 feet wide, having ditches, drainage, et cetera, et cetera. Our roads, the most of them are 12 feet wide, which is the minimum by ordinance that you can do. But that 12 feet, we make it according to, we build it according to DOT specs, paving and base. The Fairfield CTCs, and they'll tell you in a second, their mission is to pave the dirt roads of the county. Right now, we've got, I believe it's 96 roads. After this year, there'll be 96 unpaid roads in the county, and their mission is to pave them all.
Mr. Coleman, for one second, would you tell people how those roads are paved per district?
That's my next thing, Council Chairman. Six, seven years ago, there's been a formula about paving roads for, I don't know, 10 or 12 years. And six, seven years ago, we got a committee together that consisted of CTC administration, and we had some outside people. And we all sat around a table for a couple of afternoons to take what we had and to try to improve it and make it a really good system. And I think what we've got now is a really good system. And this system goes by a formula. And the formula is a resident gets two points. A church gets two points. If it's a cut-through road, and I don't mean a circle, I mean a cut-through road to save you time, that gets five points. And then the big item is the density, and the density is houses per mile. So if you've got a road that's got 10 houses and it's a mile long, that's 10 points. If you've got the same road that's got 10 houses and a half mile long, that's 20 points, because there's more houses per mile. Now, once we get those in points established, then we rotate districts. We take the highest priority in District 1, 2, 3, right on around. Now, District 6 does not have any more roads. District 7 will be through this year. So then it'll only be five districts. There are two exceptions to that rule that I just told you that we have, might say, updated or changed or I think improved. We ran into a case where we had maybe a road that's three quarters of a mile long, and it had a little spur going off. It was, if it's less than 1,000 feet, we paved the spur with the main road. We call that piggybacking. And the purpose behind that is to keep the county from having to go down a paved road a half mile to maintain 1,000 feet of road. Now, if it's a long road over 1,000 feet, you know, that's a different story. But we keep it within 1,000 feet. The second thing that we've changed, and all this was approved by council and the changes were made, and they're in an ordinance. The second thing we changed was we ran into a couple of situations where we had to go over a dirt road to get to a road that's going to be paved. Well, nobody thought that made any sense. They thought, well, it'll pave the road too, the road we're going to pave. So we added that to the ordinance. So if you've got a road up here, and the main road's down here, and the road getting to that one, we're going to pave up to the one that gets paved. So you don't go through a dirt road to get to a paved road. That was just common sense, we thought. Private drives, we do not touch. Common drives are not eligible for pavement. We don't touch them either. Now, let's talk a little bit about distribution of funds. Every month, we get a statement from DOT, and it tells us how much money we got in the bank, how much income we had that month, and how much we spent. And the bank balance is, interest is paid on the bank balance. So they don't keep our money, they pay us interest on it. And they also keep up with how much money is committed. So they know we have to program what we commit. So they know all the time how much of the DOT road has been committed and how much we got, you know, uncommitted funds. The contracts that the CTC lets are county contracts. We let them through procurement, following all the procurement records, procedures and records. And then we do the work, and as we take draws on a monthly basis, the county pays the contractor and us, and then we send in a request to DOT to get reimbursed. So the county really finances it, and DOT reimburses you. That monthly statement, it comes from DOT, it's a little bit hard to read, but it's got three or four things in there that you can pretty well detect what's going on. And basically, that's, I'd be glad to answer any questions. That's it in a nutshell.
Any question from council?
Mr. Coleman, I really want to thank you for coming tonight and all the work you do with the CDC and other things and the other project. You've just done some work in Ridgeway, so I want to thank you for that too, especially as we try to make due diligence on land and that kind of stuff. So again, thank you for all you do.
I appreciate it, and like I said, do not hesitate to call me. There's nothing, you know, some of the stuff's complicated, and I understand it. And if you don't, I'd be glad to explain it to you.
Yes, and I too would like to thank you. I always like the fact that you respond very quickly to phone calls, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caller.
We were expecting Mr. Bryant Brown to come in with us tonight from GMK and give us a courthouse update, but he's not able to make it. So we'll keep on rolling. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I can mention, Mr. Bryant Brown, really, let me give you his regrets. He called me today, and I don't know whether many people know, don't want to talk about it, but he had a son in Asheville that he needed to attend to tonight. So again, So again, and he was worried about trying to be here tonight, but as we all know, you need to probably take care of your family, that kind of thing. So again, I told him he didn't need to regret that, just take care of his family. But one of the points I do want to bring forward is, Mr. Robertson asked a question last, last week, so we want to have him here tonight to talk about the courthouse. As we said at that time, there have been no changes to the project scope. So the plan that was put forward with the, with Mr. Bryant and the courthouse, all that work is continuously being done. This council have agreed to go ahead and do that piece of work. I think it's about a month, a month and a half ago, Mr. Bryant met with the Administration Finance Committee, Ms. Norma Brannan and Ms. Barnes from the courthouse. So all that work is still going forward as planned out. One of the things we did ask him though, is try to work on how you reduce the cost. And he is diligent working on trying to reduce the cost and he's given us a number, but don't want to share that tonight because I want him to make sure we confirm those numbers. But he's working on reducing the cost and the project scope remain as outlined and shared with council as of the day. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a request of action from our Economic Development Department and I'm gonna ask Mr. Ty Davenport if he'll come and give some explanation and details on that.
Thank you, thank you, Council. So we, we've been working with an engineering firm, Davidson Floyd, to develop and design a, we'll call it a ref graded pad in the Fairfield Commerce Center. As you know, the county is currently, we're out of product. We sold all our existing buildings. We sold our spec building and we have left in our inventory is fully serviced, served property in the Fairfield Commerce Center. And what I mean by that is we have water, sewer, electricity, get natural gas and so forth, but the property is raw. It has not been, it's not been graded. It's, you know, it's, has topographical challenges. So we, we sold the speculative building a while back and we're using some of the funds where we're asking to roll some of those funds over and to grade this pad. A million dollars from the speculative building sale is what we're looking for. And then we also have $660,000 of grant funding from a couple of different sources that we, that we're gonna be able to use. The engineer, when they did the design, they estimated the cost to be somewhere between 1.6 and 1.7 million dollars. We bid the project out. I think there were eight bidders that responded. So we got a good, got a good response and the low bidder was at 1.129. So we're significantly lower than the, than the budget, which is great. We, there is, there is the possibility that there could be, you know, change orders due to unsuitable soils that have to be removed, that kind of thing, or potentially expanding the pad if we, if we had a user that came in and wanted to do something bigger. So we don't, we can't, we can't spend the difference between 1.66 and 1.129 just yet. We need to keep that to the side. So we're asking the council, I'm asking the council if they would to approve the expenditure, to approve moving forward with the, with the project. The contractor is ready to go. In fact, they've got their equipment on flatbed trucks out of the site now. They just need a, need the document signed and so forth. And we can get started. Again, we are in desperate need of new product in order to keep the momentum that we've had over the last three years going.
Mr., and you had how many, is it bidders? You said eight bidders?
Believe it was eight.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion, motion to approve, move in second to, motion to approve the grading request. Are there any discussion, any, any question from council? Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Poses nay. So let the record show 6-0. Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Coleman. Clerk to council report, none. County council time. Any counsel count? Mr. Robertson.
Mr. Chair, I forgot to mention, Mr. Paulie stated he wanted it on record that he was on vacation.
Okay. Thank you. Let the record show that Mr. Paul is on vacation. Okay, anyone else? Again, on Saturday at, at 10 o'clock from 10 to 11:30, we're having a town hall in Ridgeway for District 1. Again, it's gonna be at the Ridgeway Fire Department. It's gonna be out there in the Bay Area so we can do social distance and also be out in the open. We have a lot of county agencies that's gonna be there to talk about the things we're doing in the county. So we do want to encourage folks to attend. It's 350 South Palmer Street, Ridgeway, South Carolina. And again, it is the fire station in Ridgeway, so I encourage you to come and look forward to seeing you. If no other county council would like to speak, item 16, executive session. Can we get a motion to go in the executive session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second that we go into executive session. Item A, receipt of legal advice, discussion regarding Valencia Bridge update pursuant to South Carolina Code. B, receipt of legal advice, discussion regarding solid waste disposal fees pursuant to South Carolina Code. Item C, receipt of legal advice, discussion regarding potential sale of Providence freestanding emergency room pursuant to South Carolina Code. D, receipt of legal advice, discussion regarding road maintenance fee pursuant to South Carolina Code. E, receipt of legal advice, discussion regarding agriculture exemption pursuant to South Carolina Code. F, receipt of legal advice, discussion regarding Commerce Center bridges pursuant to South Carolina Code. G, contractual matter, discussion concerning possible sale of former hospital property and existing lease pursuant to South Carolina Code. If no other discussion, I'm all in favor, going to executive session. Aye.
Aye.
Poses nay. Let the record show there's 6-0.
I understand you're giving legal advice on A, B, and E. Can you give us any insight?
No, ma'am.
Well, I mean, you're talking about...
Okay, it's been, it's been voted. We go to the executive session. We adjourn the executive session.
Bill, you've already voted on that.
What did I want?
Already voted on this. And if it's not, if it's not supposed to be... I think I'm not gonna stay.
I don't know. I don't even wanna stay. I don't even gotta stay. I was saying, she ain't standing. I said, hell, I don't even wanna stay.
Say that again.
I was saying, she ain't standing. I said, hell, I don't even wanna stay.
Feel free to come by Saturday.
Chicken bread.
Oh, yeah.
Feel cool.